Hey, good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the council meeting. And I'd like to remind everyone, please be sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a core of present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we come to you once again, the humblest way we know how, come about his and humble hearts, realizing, oh God, that we are in need of you. We look to the hills for what's come with our help. All of our help truly comes from the Lord. We need your leading, your guiding, your direction as we carry out the city business. On today, we thank you for our mayor, council, every department head, just continue to strengthen our hands, God, to carry out the business of the city. We give you every bit of the praise, the glory, and all the honor. We ask it all in the matchless name of our risen Lord and Savior Jesus, to Christ we pray, and all that agree, say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting held on July 15th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of July 11th through the 17th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven on our agenda is reserved for proclamations and commendations, and this morning we have a special one. And before we have that, just real quick, Mayor, I want to let my friend Bob Sisson know, Bob, I owe you an apology. I told you a fib. We're not here to talk about any kind of zoning. We're here to give you a proclamation. So if you would please stand up, sir, after you catch your breath, if you would please stand up and walk over here to Mayor Ford.
He was wondering why we got Gil here.
I have known Bob Sisson for, oh gosh, I don't know, 30-plus years. Not a finer man is out there. And, you know, Gadsden is made up of great people over the decades, and that's what makes our city so great. And it's people like Bob Sisson that dedicates his life to philanthropic endeavors for our city, that always helps those that are less fortunate, always looking out for the guy that needs help. Bob, thank you. Thank you for the example you've been for countless of us guys, and we love you and we just appreciate you. Now, Mayor Ford's going to read a well-deserved and earned proclamation.
Reeve Snyder. Reeve Snyder. All right. I want to read this, please, on behalf of the city council and City of Gadsden. It's a proclamation whereas Robert Philip Sisson Jr. was born in Huntsville on July the 23rd, 1945, and when he was six weeks old, relocated with his parents to Gadsden, their hometown. Prior to his graduation from Gadsden High School in 1963, Bob exhibited superior leadership skills by his participation in Cheerful Charlie's, the National Thespian Society Coral Club, Frank Cottle High Y Pre-Youth and Youth Legislators, Usher Club, $100 Club, and National Honor Society. Following the unexpected death of the elected class president, Bob's classmates turned to him for leadership as class president. And whereas Bob attended Marion Institute and the University of Alabama, graduated from the university in 1968, and entered the United States Army Reserve as a second lieutenant, he was ordered to active duty in 1968 and was deployed to the Republic of Vietnam. He rose in grade to captain before he received an honorable discharge from active duty in November 1971, and received the Silver Star for his service in Vietnam. Whereas Bob returned to Gadsden to resume his life's work, raise his family, and serve his community. As a member of First United Methodist Church, he taught Sunday School and served on a number of committees. He also was active in civic affairs, participating in the J.C.'s, Big Men, Home Builders, Junior Achievement, and organized his high school reunion, as well as 50th and 60th reunions. And whereas, as an active member of the Gadsden Kiwanis Club, Bob served as vice president, president-elect, president, and past president in successive years. He served as lieutenant governor of Kiwanis and chairman of the local pancake day. Bob started the local happy minute where a member pays $1 and gets one minute to tell the club members why he or she is especially happy that day. We need to do that here, Bob. Recently, he created a program where Kiwana members and citizens of Etowah County display American flags six times a year. Bob has been honored by many awards for Kiwana's activity, including the Jay Mercer Barnett Fellow Award, Top Pancake Salesman, the Gordon Nizable Dewer Award, the esteemed George F. Hickson Award, and achieved over 33 years in perfect attendance. And whereas, Bob has been married to Kathy Reeve Snyder for 42 years, and is the proud father of three daughters, who have blessed him with nine grandchildren. Now, therefore, I, Craig Ford, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, hereby join with the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming July 22nd, 2025, as Robert Philip Sisson Jr. Day.
How much of this was a fib?
That's all true.
I'm just blown away. Last year at Pancake Day, I walked into Pancake Day, and they had a big picture of me on an easel, and the placemats, many of you can go to Pancake Day know, my picture is on the placemats. So the Kiwanis Club, along with others, have honored me tremendously, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Bob, can we get a picture with the council?
Sure.
Yeah, come on up.
You did a great job. He did.
Thank you.
Kathy, I think we pulled it off.
I think we pulled it off.
I'm going to have to... Well, we need more Bob Sisson. You're welcome. Thank you. We need more Bob Sistons in this world. I can tell you that. I went to church with Bob's parents, R.P. and Estelle Sisson, for many years, and Bob comes from really good people. Great, great family.
He's got a rough neighborhood. He's got a bad next-door neighbor.
Yeah, that's right.
It's John Moore.
Yeah, he does live next door to John Dunney. Oh, my goodness. He'll put you on the prayer list. All right, we'll go to item number eight, and at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor for the recess, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to recess the council meeting.
All right. And this is the reason what you're going to see is why we have adopted this new change. So we had one item in that folder. Typically, we would start at 10 o'clock, go to the work session. Y'all, our work session took maybe 10 minutes, and so that'd be 10:15. Then you'd have to wait till 11 o'clock for the city council meeting to start, and that's 45 minutes of wasted time. So at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the council meeting. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconvene the council meeting, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for reconvening.
All right. Item 10 is where we are on our agenda. It's unfinished business. We have none today. Item 11 is a resolution requesting support of the Etowah County Legislative Delegation. This is to request the adoption of a local bill to help offset the cost of conducting municipal elections by increasing the qualifying fee to no more than $500 for mayoral candidates and to no more than $200 for city council and school board candidates. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? I just will point out, I think last week, we learned from the city clerk's office that last election, city election, which is mayor, council, and school board, with the general election and the runoff, cost the taxpayers, cost you about $94,000, $95,000. So that's a lot of money to spend on an election. So this is, these fees have not been addressed, or I think they're the original fee, so they've probably been there since at least 1986. So, pardon? Oh, in the 60s, yes, even before, yeah. So it's just, I appreciate the mayor's guidance and vision and leadership in getting us in these certain situations where the fees have not been addressed ever. And so it's not punitive, it's just reflective of what every other city does. And so we're joining with the vast majority. Any other comments or anything? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing project development agreement with A.J.M.L.L.C., Gadsden, Alabama. This is for development of an Alabama Rural King Retail Shopping Center on North Third Street. The agreement provides for a revenue warrant secured by the proceeds of city sales tax necessary to pay the project's city sales tax payments. The city agrees to share 2.25% of the city's 5% of sales tax proceeds for a term of 15 years and not to exceed $7,753,144, whichever occurs first. We reviewed a resolution authorizing the project agreement last week, which was placed on today's agenda. Today, we have an ordinance that authorizes the warrant, as well as the project agreement. We need a motion to substitute the new ordinance and agreement.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we substitute item 2025-661.1, the ordinance in place of item 661 that we discussed last week.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor for the substitution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the substitute to be made.
And given that this is a new... I'm sorry.
That's okay. Since the substituted document is an ordinance, we would need unanimous consent to vote on it today. Do I have a motion for immediate consideration? So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor for considering the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you have unanimous consent for consideration.
The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing economic development agreement with Southern Brew Corp. to locate a Seven Brew at 202 East Meagan Boulevard. This is to grant a rebate of 2% of the city's 5% sales tax proceeds for a period of five years from the opening date or until a total of $200,000 has been paid to the developer, whichever comes first. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing economic development agreement with Triple C Development LLC. to locate a Zaxby's Restaurant at 900 Gilbert Ferry Road Southeast. This is to grant a rebate of 2% of the city's 5% sales tax proceeds for a period of five years from the opening date or until a total of $200,000 has been paid to the developer, whichever comes first. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
You know, Mayor, I don't want to pass an opportunity to brag on our John Moore and the Community Development Office and Mayor's Office. Y'all, in one day, we have just brought three companies to the City of Gadsden, so Mayor, thank you. Appreciate the leadership over there.
Appreciate it. I was going to discuss it in my notes, but I want to go ahead and, since he came in, because we're working diligently on some other projects right now, and they just stepped in, and I'm sure John has stepped out, but I want to say this, these companies don't come to a city that's not growing. So if this is not evident that the city is growing, then I don't know what is. But these three companies were a result of a lot of work behind the scenes, actually having to travel. Somebody has to do it, having to go to Las Vegas. A lot of people go, well, you have a lot of fun. Well, it's a lot of work. I'd rather be in Gadsden, to be honest with you. But we went out there, met with every one of these people, and there's four more that we met with in a three-day period. And hopefully, we'll have some good news to come down the road. But I just want to tell you, John Moore's a hustler. I have to wear my tennis shoes, and my feet get sore, and I grouch and I gripe and everything else. And he goes, just one more, just one more. Let's stop by one more. And so this is a result, when we show them our demographics, when we show them what's going on in Gadsden, when we show them the Google searches, and they research Gadsden, then John does his due diligence with his team behind the scenes and his board, which consists of Councilman Wilson, Councilman Robinson, and some others. This is a result of all that hard work. Now, this is a lot of money to Gadsden, and people may say, well, we don't need a Zaxby's. Yeah, we do. We'll take anything we can get that develops sales tax. The reason Zaxby wanted to locate at that area, because there wasn't a chicken place at that area, at that exit. So they'll get an interstate sign, they'll create a lot of revenue, and we create a lot of sales tax, and they make a lot of money, so that's what we hope. So, thank you.
There's also a lot of jobs being created. I know the Rural King, I think, has 90 full-time jobs. The other twos won't be quite as large as that, obviously, but still, those are jobs that are needed in our community and that help people make a living and provide a way forward, so.
And you won't be able to recognize the old Midtown Gregerson Shopping Center by the time they get through with it, which is a lot of, which is a lot of hump in our projections for revenue.
It's like a $12 million economic development that they're going to spend.
It's a big deal. It's a big deal.
Yeah. My goodness. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We'll go to item 15. It comes under first readings. This is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2025 budget. This appropriates the remaining tax increment financing District One balance with $25 million... Wait, no, excuse me, $25,000. Well, that would be a big, that would be a... Full disclosure, I had laser surgery on my eye this morning at 6:45. Tony Catanzaro said he thinks I'm going to live, he thinks I'm going to make it, but I'm still dilated and whatever I am, so, pardon, I apologize. So, $25,000 for the Riverside Park Dedication Monument, and $2,300,000 for the new city hall renovations. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, this is, if you don't mind me mentioning this, this is something that we're redoing the TIF as we sit here right now. The legal department's redoing the TIF with the county. This is a use-it-or-lose-it situation, so this is a good reason to hurry up and use it, and we have a project to use it on.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. Item 16 is an ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 118, Article 5, regarding truck routes. This limits truck routes within the city to all state and federal routes, specifies procedures regarding deviation from truck routes to destination points within the city, and establishes fines for violations. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
So, Mr. President, this is also something about going along with cleaning up Gadsden with our own paving crew. We're paving roads, but we're continuing to pave roads, and trucks continue to use the wrong routes. And when we met with Councilwoman Latham, she brought it to our attention on one particular road. But it's not just that one road, a lot of trucks, and it's not their fault either. They're confused because their GPS has taken them a different route. So now we'll have signage available, and we're working with the local highway department to determine what are the appropriate truck routes for truckers to drive on so they don't damage our roads and come through neighborhoods that they shouldn't be going through.
I applaud this. In my seven years, I get constant calls about paving rich in my East Gadsden district of large transfer trucks going down there. It's a neighborhood road, it's curvy, it's not built for trucks. The integrity of the pavement isn't built for that weight load, so it further compromises our streets, which makes us have to repave quicker than we should be repaving, and it's just a safety hazard. So I appreciate what we're doing here on this ordinance. All right. Item 17 is new business. I don't think we have any today. Item 17 is, 18, rather, is department reports, committees, boards. We have any of those this morning? All right, then we'll move on to item 19, remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor Ford, if you'll start us off.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. The amphitheater had a concert last Saturday night, a Taylor Swift tribute band, and that was a lot of fun. A lot of young people, and got to enjoy a concert. It was fun to watch. I'm not sure how many kids attended, but I know total attendance was around 750 people in the amphitheater. John Moore and Janet Terrence had three tribute bands this year, The Eagles, Prince, and Taylor Swift. The first band paid for all three up front, so we were excited about, not that we're trying to make money on these concerts, but not only that, we offered the tickets at $10 apiece. The Eagles had a concert here, not the Eagles, the tribute band, The Eagles, had a concert here for $10, and they were going to Birmingham the next week selling tickets for, I believe it was $60 or $50, I'm not sure. So kudos to them for hosting this and offering a good quantity of life issue to our public. This Saturday, Dwight Park, I want to, I hope a lot of people will attend this. A lot of emphasis was put in Dwight Park, Church of the Highlands, did their serve day, put a lot of elbow grease into it. Parks and Rec, Building, Cooper's Crew, Public Works, the police. We have decided, if we're going to have a park, we need to fix it. There's a lot of parks in Gadsden. If we're not going to have a park, we need to close it down and sell the property. This is one park that is very community-oriented, and a lot of people utilize this park. There's been a lot of people, put a lot of time and energy into this park, and this Saturday from 10 to 2, we're going to have a celebration. I believe it is in Councilman Robinson's district, but also affects Councilwoman Minatra's district, so they will be there also, I know. We'll have a lot of activities. We're going to have bouncy houses, give away free hot dogs, snow cones. We're going to have a lot of trucks down there, Public Works, fire trucks and stuff for the community to see, but it'll be something really nice to have. I talked about John Moore Commercial Development and mentioned Gadsden's growing. I also want to talk about Goodyear. I get a lot of questions about the Goodyear site. I want the public to realize, the old Goodyear site is now owned by Phoenix. It's a corporation that buys plants that have gone out of business at a lot of times, for example, Russell Athletic Ware in Wataumka. If you're familiar with Russell Athletic, they bought that facility. They didn't have anything come in for eight to 10 years, but when they did, it changed their whole economy. They actually divided it up, and they have a lot of activity going on in Wataumka and Alexander City, and it's really helped their economy. Without those buildings, it wouldn't happen. Has anything happened at Goodyear that fell through? Yes, and I've commented on that. We are a conduit to bring Phoenix and the business together and try to offer incentives to make it work. We can't help it if a company backs out because Phoenix decides the rent's going to be too high. That's not our, we're doing the best we can to get jobs here at that facility. Now, have we had somebody bail out? Yes, a couple of them. Do we have people on the hook right now? Yes. I have three NDA's signed that I can't talk about. One of them is a big home run, that if we get it, it's in the, probably the last, next to last step or last step to get it here. But I want the people to know that we're actively recruiting with our IDA, David Hooks, and we have made already trips to go see the people. They've came to see us probably four or five times. We're hoping to have something to announce at the Goodyear plant, but I want to let people know that some people get caught up in that one plant. But also, if you need a job, there's jobs available right now. Fair Automotive's hiring, Prince Metal Stampings hiring, City of Gadsden is hiring. We have available jobs if people want to work. A lot of times, people, I say this, and I don't mean this negative, but when they say we need jobs, they want a job where they make more money but work less. So there are jobs available in the City of Gadsden. You may have to get a little sweaty, you may have to get a little dirty, but there are jobs available. But we are working on the Goodyear plant. I want you to know that, and we actually have some people that are interested in it, and they call daily, just to be honest with you. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that, and David Hooks is doing a wonderful job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Appreciate that update and information. Councilwoman Latham? Nothing today, thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to just echo something you said earlier. It's exciting to see three new businesses coming to the city, especially being approved in one day. So we're excited about all the dirt being moved around the city, especially coming over the bridge with that Rural King development. Shout out to John Moore, I'm not sure if he's in here or not, but all the hard work that's gone into that, I'm just excited about what's going on in the city. Thank you, Mayor Ford and council, for all that you do. Also want to give a shout out to our street department. Had a community meeting on last week, Ruth and Tina both attended. Some of the residents there was complaining about the parks, the limbs that had fallen. Of course, we had a tree that fell in the park. That was addressed, the lights have been corrected. All those limbs that were mentioned have been cleaned up, cut, and removed. So I just want to, you know, bad news travel fast, good news travel slow. So I just want to take a minute to thank our cleanup department and all that they do out on the street. So thank you, Mayor Ford. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, can I have an alibi on that one?
Yes.
So I want to thank Councilman Steve Smith for having that meeting. He had it during the work hours from 8:00 to 4:30. I realize y'all's districts are different, and everybody has meetings at night, and we try our best to attend them all. When we send someone that's not a department head, we have to pay overtime. A lot of times in the fourth quarter of the budget, the overtime's been exhausted, but we can send department heads. But please keep in mind also, they do have families and football games and kids also, and I do not mandate them to go to district meetings if they've been to one recently in the past. But we're trying our best to meet all seven of your obligations in your council meetings, but I thought the one during the day hours was very impressive. I think you had 10 to 12 people there, a lot of informative discussion I was told about, I was debriefed on, and also, we were able to implement a lot of changes. So thank you, Councilman Smith.
Good job. Thank you. Councilman Avery?
To piggyback off the Rural King Economic Development, which is a very good thing for District 3, the City of Gadsden, I'll speak particularly towards District 3 as we are in a mindset of property value and the things that we will be discussing at our community meeting coming up this week. But kudos to all those that played a part in that, and the opportunity for Rural Kings to talk to a few farmers that put me to a side at an event. And so the opportunity of being able to travel in a close proximity to this Rural King, compared to going to Abbeville, things of that nature, common things to be known. So I'm interested in also the competitiveness in pricing and things of that nature. So see how that works along with jobs, as we've, you know, seen a decrease with employment at Job Corps and some other places that have a temporary shutdown and hold, as they are slowly coming back. But this gives some alternatives, as well as those other jobs that are available with our hiring departments in our city. Back-to-school bash, District 3 is having a community back-to-school bash. All city and county areas are welcome to come and participate. This is just an opportunity, there's a lot of people that are giving away supplies, we're partnership with, or in correspondence with the school system and the Gadsden Public Library and some other entities. So we're going to opt out in giving supplies, because a lot of people will be giving away supplies that day and leading up to the return of school. So what we wanted to do is to create an atmosphere and a space where kids can come out and just really enjoy themselves. Each area of the grounds at Carver will be providing with games and bouncy houses. Every bounce house or slide or obstacle course will be water-related, so make sure the kids have appropriate clothing and then also some dry clothes and towel. If you don't mind, we're asking that everyone that comes to participate, listen, this is not daddy's daycare. not daddy's daycare. We're not asking you to bring them or drop them off. We're asking you to bring them, stay out with them, and have a good time, so bring your tents, bring your fans, bring your coolers. We'll have music provided. There'll be a local bike club that will be also providing free food. So again, just a community atmosphere, family-friendly fun, and an opportunity for the kids to have another good event, hopefully, during this summer break that they can remember before going back to school. And final, District Three community meeting will be this Saturday, that even, I'm sorry, the back-to-school bash will be this Saturday from one PM to five PM at the Carver Square, I mean, Carver, yes, Carver Square, ten thirty Tuscaloosa Avenue. And then final, the District Three community meeting will be this Thursday, this Thursday at Carver Community Center at five thirty. The highlighted topics of discussion will be nuisance and abadements as it relates to houses that may have not been reported. We'll go over the, the application of applying the Hay Gadsden app to your phones, how to work it. I think we've done that for two to three meetings to show people, each citizens that are interested in having that app so that you can report things, the efficiency that that possible app could provide before going to the next step of wanting to come to council meeting and speak and things of that nature. So I believe in just kind of going through a protocol first and then see how that works, and then we go to the next step. So we'll go over that. I think we have a confirmation that our city engineer will be present, all right, so that'll help with the update on the drainage project there at Eleventh Street and Twelfth. So more importantly, for those, please attend. We generally have a pretty good presence, so thank you all for just staying in tune with what's going on, being transparent, and coming to these community meetings that we try to have once a month. I think this will be a helpful meeting as we kind of, kind of just target in on some, some venues and places in our community that we can kind of make a discussion on, and hopefully that we can get some resolution as it relates to getting some of these eyesores out of our community, and hopefully getting, having some replacements that'll be beneficial to the help of property value and et cetera. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
I don't really have anything, Mr. President, other than to say, we've, obviously, we've talked a lot about John Moore today, and I'd just like to keep everybody grounded. John, I don't like your haircut, and I think your shoes need polishing.
Again, Theater of Gadsden in Alabama City is hosting the Margaritaville, which is a musical with all of Jimmy Buffett's music. It is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this weekend. You can obtain your tickets on theaterofgadsden.org. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Robinson?
Yes, sir, I don't really have anything. I just want to remind everybody about Dwight Park. That's ten to two on Saturday. Did John Moore have anything to do with that, or we did that? We flew on that solo, didn't we? Sorry, John. We do appreciate everything else you do. That'll be all, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I got one more thing.
Yes, Mayor Ford.
I'm sorry.
No, come in.
Good news. Just got word that we have negotiated and we have signed a jail contract, so it will start August first at thirty dollars a day rate. It'll be a three-year deal with a one-year automatic renewal. Thank the council for working with me diligently to include the language in there, so this will take place August first. We will not transfer our prisoners from Calhoun County to Etowah County. They will serve out their term there, and we will still utilize Calhoun County Jail when needed. However, I want to thank the sheriff, Commissioner State, I mean Commissioner Enzer, for helping put this deal together in the end, but it just shows negotiations work, and thank Lee Roberts and Tina King in our office. Thank you.
Outstanding news. Thank you.
Thank goodness. The beds are so much more comfortable here than they are.
I do want to say one more thing, and I usually do this between every once a month or every other month. I want to also thank our small businesses, our mom-and-pop businesses that sometimes get recognized and sometimes don't. Also, those small businesses that have just come into the city and opened or started the business here in the city. It's very important as, you know, big announcements for those big businesses, which is definitely needed, but for those mom-and-pops or small businesses that are starting up with one or two employees or one employee which is self-employed, that also kind of makes this wheel turn in this community as well. So I want to also appreciate you, I always say that and be specific as it relates to District Three, because, you know, of our challenge of our community, but nevertheless, we're working through those challenges, of course. The Rural King is obviously a tremendous effort in doing so. The addressing of the drainage issues is also a, and correction and improving, and so as we try and work in to increase those things, want to thank those small businesses that have been there for quite some time, and then those new businesses that are coming into the community and into the city for your efforts of considering Gadsden. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Avery. Well, we've had a good day here at the city council meeting, announced three, finalized three new companies coming to Gadsden, represent over a hundred full-time jobs, and I want to thank those companies for choosing Gadsden. You know, they get to go anywhere. They can go wherever they want to go. They have chosen our city, and so I want to thank them for that confidence in Gadsden, Alabama. And wanted to also, just one, Bob Sisson, thank you for coming this morning. Thank you for being here. Well, you're very welcome, and all the decades of dedication and service, they don't go unnoticed, Bob. We're not the only ones that pick up that Bob Sisson is a good guy and that he's always working and volunteering to help others, and so that's your life work. You've done that, and speaking of life work, happy birthday. I don't think you would be mind if I said that Bob turned, Bob's eighty. Bob had his eightieth birthday. That's a great celebration. Congratulations. But we're super glad you're here. Kathy, thank you for all that you do as well. Behind every great Bob Sisson is a, is a great Kathy Sisson, so we're certainly glad to have you here this morning. And last but not least, I've had some questions about our bond and what we're going to do moving forward, Mayor Ford, and I just want, I want everybody to know, there's, information is available, so I think, Michael, help me, if I'm wrong, tell me, please. You can go on our Facebook page, the city Facebook page, or the city website, and there's an eleven-minute video where the mayor-
That's all Facebook and YouTube.
Facebook and YouTube, okay. So you can go to Facebook and YouTube and search for the city of Gadsden, and there's a, last week, Mayor Ford gave a really good presentation with large pictures over here, you know, poster-sized things, and went through this, item by item, didn't leave anything out, very explanatory, very open. How are we going to pay for this? Well, that's explained, so please go and watch that. Don't, don't listen to Uncle Kent or Aunt whoever, whatever. Listen to, listen to the people that have the information, that are actually signing the paperwork, that are doing the work, doing the due diligence, and I'll say this, if we had eight different people up here, there'd probably be a total different decisions. That's, that's just how government works. That's how our system works. We have these eight people up here that have won elections, that were, that were voted on by the people of Gadsden, and the way a constitutional republic works, which is where we live in a constitutional republic, that's, that's what this is called, where we have elections every four years, and typically, we vote for people that we think are going to vote the way we would vote if we were sitting in that chair. That's kind of how it, that's the bottom line. We vote for people that we think would think like us. We're never going to get it right every time. We're going to get some votes wrong. That's for every elected body in every city in America, and for every state government in, in America, but today, we have these eight people that are up here. We've won the elections, we listen to our constituents, and we pray over these things, and we are making decisions that we feel is going to better our city for genera, not decades to come, generations to come. These are bold moves, and it takes a lot of courage to do things like this, but it takes a lot of research and study that we get from outside people that will help us make these decisions. This isn't something that's come very lightly. This has been at least a three-year study to make, to come to this conclusion, and at the very, three years ago, I was probably nervous as a cat in a room full of rockers, but today, I'm not. I'm very confident that we've made good, sound business decisions based on hours, countless hours of research and study, and I'm confident that it's going to turn out well, and that we're all going to be glad when all this is over, that we've made some decisions to move our city forward. It's just time that we did that, y'all. It's time that we move our city forward. We've got a mayor which is a good organizer, good leadership, good vision, a council that does the same kind of work, and we've all come together to move our city forward. So I encourage you, watch the information, listen to the information that the city puts out that has the correct information, so you'll have the correct information to make your decision or to determine how you feel about this. If you have questions, there's seven council members up here and a mayor. Call us. That's what we're here for. I was, I had, I took my wife's car to a car wash this morning before I came here and pulled up next to a good friend from my church, and he literally, very nicely said, how are we going to pay for this bond? Well, I was able to explain it to him, and when I finished in about two minutes, he went, man, I'm glad I ran into you. Now I feel so much better. And all I did was repeat information that Mayor Ford said that's in the video that I'm encouraging you, the public, to go watch. The information's there. There is, there is no, no other way to say it. The information's there, we've, we've put it out, we're as transparent as we can be, and please take time to go do your own research and watch these videos. I think the video's eleven minutes, takes eleven minutes to go, it's been edited down to, you know, to make it as tight as it can be, and it's good information. Mayor Ford, that was a great presentation. Thank you for how you put that together. It was really good. So that's all that I have for today. I appreciate everybody's help up here and-
Mr. President, one point of privilege, as Council President said, if you have questions, that's what we're here for. I would just ask that you start in numerical order, that'd be with District One, and call in that order. Thank you.
When I would just say, I would go back and love to say, like, I love the part about, there are people out there telling us that we're not being transparent and we're hiding all this, and we've been working on this for three years. Since we got elected, we've been working on this, and you're welcome to call us, we'll meet with you, we'll meet with you here at City Hall, we'll come and meet with you somewhere that's convenient for you, but don't go out there barking on the social media platform about how we don't know what we're doing or we're making these quick decisions, but we're really not, and I mean, just know your information before you go out there and talk bad, and try just to be positive, Gadsden. I mean, we're working hard, we're trying to be positive ourselves. This is going to be a good thing, and I mean, if you don't agree with it, you don't agree with it, but there's no reason to go out on social media and talk bad about us, and you're welcome to come talk to us, and we're, we're open. Call us.
And again, start with one or seven. Thank you.
Councilwoman Latham, so your tag, you're, thank you, Councilman Robinson, I appreciate that.
I have some good advice.
Ma'am?
I have good advice.
Oh, you have good advice. You want to start at seven? She wants to flip it, so.
With the golden child.
We never start with seven. We can start with seven. I'll start. I'm happy to start.
Well, it's, it's, but the point is, the information's there, you know, it's so hard, y'all, when you're running for office, you're campaigning right now in the heat of the summer, and you're, and you, and you win, and you're ecstatic, and then the work begins, and you know, the last thing any of us want to do is get these positions and then clamor together to do something that'll hurt our, our city. I mean, why would we want, I mean, nobody has that attitude. We're all trying to help our city and help our family members, help our neighbors and our friends and our church friends and the community at, at large, so we just, we appreciate your prayers. Just hang in there with us. I think great days are coming, so Mayor Ford, thank you. Counsel, thank you.
Mr. President, never forget something Joe Ford said. Two percent of the people take up ninety percent of the oxygen. Well, there's ninety-eight percent of the people out there, in my opinion, that are happy with it.